Just on prior council meetings.
None at this time.
Special events applications.
No questions, go ahead.
Thank you. We have a presentation tonight by Garden State Film Festival?
Same time. Okay. I met Diane a couple of years ago and we've been working together on a couple of projects and I suggested this year that the, since we are, since the festival is coming down to Asbury Park, we just give a week of our party the first night, so I would invite friends. We've got Xander Berkeley from The Walking Dead who comes as a special guest. Ed Asner, of course, will be there, as well as numerous other celebrities.
Armando Sante.
And, thank you, Armando Sante. My background is in filmmaking, I'm a filmmaker of the daughter of Paul Henry, who if you've watched old movies, was one of the co-stars of Casablanca. And if you've watched the romantic old movies, he was the star of That Voyager with Vinnie Davis where he went through cigarettes and everything, so he passed on. Did very well for cigarettes, not so well for people's health. But I'm here to help throw the party of the year.
Yay!
Yay!
Okay. So anyway, we are happy to even, on the screen are some slides of our retrospect. Last year was our 15th anniversary, this will be our 16th event. And it will remind those of you who don't remember, well, most of you are recognized and do remember, what the city of Asbury Park looked like at that time and what we did to help revitalize the area. Some of the things you should know is the GSFF was born in 2002 and first presented in 2003. We were the lead organization with the black box in creating the Asbury Park Cultural Plan, which I would like for us to revisit very much. GSFF was the lead organization in the effort to save and restore the Savoy Theater. GSFF presented in Asbury Park for 11 years. We were the first to put parties in the Grand Arcade. We brought companies like Meridian that then produced parties in the Grand Arcade on an annual basis. They didn't know about it, we brought them. And we jump-started the revitalization. We are still, for the most part, a volunteer organization. GSFF brings filmmakers, fans, celebrities from literally all over the world. We make use of the entire time and fill up all eight venues. The venues this year are, we're very happy to announce, the Paramount Theater for Friday only, that's the big party in Convention Hall, and then the first screening. The Kingsley Ballroom at the Berkeley Hotel, the Continental Ballroom at the Berkeley Hotel, the venue in the Asbury Hotel, which I don't know the name of, what's the name?
The Asbury.
The Asbury. Well, who knew? Then the House of Independence, Jersey Shore Arts Center, the Asbury Park Senior Center, thank you very much to the council for helping us secure that, and the Council Chamber, which is one of our favorite venues. We will use two apps this year, we're getting very high-tech. One for the volunteers and one for patrons, which will link to the parking app. Yay! Thank you for that, that's brilliant. We're also, the highlights for 2018 is we will present over 220 films from all over the world. Last year, the person who came from farthest away was from China, the year before, South Africa. We do have films from South Africa in this year and they claim they're coming, if they get in. So we'll know all about the schedule in January. Academy award-winning stop-motion company, Leica, will do two kids' hands-on workshops. One is a class trip on Thursday, the 22nd, and one on Saturday for the general public. Not to be missed, they're terrific. They did Coraline, The Box Trolls, Kubo and the Two Strings, and Paranormal, Norman, right. VIPs we have secured so far, as Monica was saying, are Armando Sante, Xander Berkeley, Ed Asner, and more to come as the films get selected. We need your help. It's no secret that funding for arts organizations is at an all-time low in the state of New Jersey. Anyone who could help with ad sales, sponsor leads, or securing volunteers would be greatly appreciated. We really need as much help as we can get and thank you so much for being wonderful. Oh, and that rose, hot off the press, our honorary chair this year will be Brian Chapekka from iStar. So we're hoping that we get a lot of support. He's thrilled to serve and thank you all again. I hope you enjoy the old pictures of all of us that, you know, devoted so much of our many hours and love for this town. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, what the hell took you so long to come back? I'm only kidding.
We were driving back from Atlantic City.
One thing we would like to say, we did learn a lot in Atlantic City, good and bad, we learned a lot. One thing that we did, we've secured some wonderful production help from there, I mean, let's remember that. And we have some wonderful producers that are coming in. Also, the jitney guy Frank is going to come and run the people around all over town. So he's terrific and does it at a very reasonable price. So, you know, best of both worlds, live and learn.
Well, we can't thank you enough and we are so happy that you're using the Senior Center because this is the first time we'll have part of your event on the southwest section.
That's correct. And we are happy about that, yes.
We're thrilled to death and we cannot thank you enough for coming along.
Yeah, we, in the early days, my husband and I did a lot of programs with the Westside Community Center and, you know, so many, 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 with Rutgers, Leo, and, you know, we did, the Westside Community Center, we did all kinds of video projects with the kids. And we look forward to doing lots and lots of outreach again in Asbury Park.
Thank you.
Any questions?
One question.
Yes.
Do you have cards or contact information?
Absolutely. Here, move this.
I just wanted to add that I'm a proud Brookdalean, I work full-time at Brookdale Community College at Brookdale TV. So I love Asbury Park TV and we're JAG members.
Thank you.
It's really exciting.
Can't wait.
We're excited, it's our 16th homecoming, sweet 16.
March 22th through the 25th, March, can't know when it is.
Okay, I'm not gonna...
Thank you.
Okay, and everybody got ad sheets and everything else?
Yep.
Nate, do you want me to shut this off?
Anybody in the audience want a bed sheet? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, good. Okay, again Diane, thank you very much, please, thank you. And you know where we're at, so if you need anything, call.
Oh, you can count on it.
Okay. And you can count on me getting back to you.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate it.
Okay.
All right, I guess we'll move on to review of agenda items for this evening's meeting.
Resolution 2017-364 is a special event. 365 is setting the organizational meeting dates for 2018.
Which is going to be January 3rd at 7:00. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you, just wanted to fast prepare for it.
Resolution 366 is awarding of RCA agreement for 1409, Summerfield Avenue. Resolution 367 is terminating a sewer account. 368 is getting rid of property that has no value. 369 and 370 are related to liquor license renewals. And then 371 is the contract for public health nursing services for 2018. This is a referral to the planning board. Resolution 373 is change orders number one and two for Fourth Avenue improvements. There are zero-dollar amounts with that. Resolutions, change orders 17 and 18 for Black Rock for the road program, zero-dollar amounts with those. Approval of payment of bills is 375. 376 is resolution for the transfer of appropriations during 2017. You'll notice that there's a large amount for engineering. That amount for engineering is a reimbursable DEP grant. This was the remediation for the property formerly known as the Turk Club, which Interfaith has renamed, I can't remember the name. This is through the hazardous discharge grant program, so we'll be reimbursed this in the next couple of months. 377 is an execution of a shared service agreement with Ocean Township for the, with the Sewer Authority for technical rescue services, this is with the fire department. And resolution authorizing the purchase of electricity. Earlier today, we conducted energy, a reverse energy electric auction. What this, at the end of the day, what this means is that we'll save approximately $85,000 to $100,000 in the next year's energy bills, if you so elect to approve this purchase, this resolution. It is for natural gas and electric services. That's all. Is there any questions?
No questions.
Yep.
Matters by city council?
So I'd just like to take a moment and wish everyone a happy holiday season. And thank you all for coming out to these meetings that are often tedious even for us, but we appreciate your feedback and we appreciate you being engaged. And thanks to everyone who serves on a committee or commission, I know there's often long hours that go hand-in-hand with that, but we appreciate that. And just one other thing, Langosta Lounge is doing a complimentary meal on December 25th from 11:30 to 2:00, if anyone is in need of a nice hot holiday meal.
I'm sorry, I forgot one thing. We'd like, I would, staff would like to recommend adding resolution 379, which is for Fourth Avenue Pavilion, entering into agreement with Asbury, sorry, Madison Asbury, for a subsequent developer agreement for Fourth Avenue Pavilion. As you have the draft agreement, for, in summary, Madison will be doing certain workforce development activities, there's 15 city dates, and the draft agreement that was discussed in closed session, we'd like to add, no sound, no noise, no activities after the hour of 10:30 at night. So for the regular meeting we're requesting, please make that motion to add to the, sorry.
The city and the city departments of community development and recreation, along with the Quality of Life Committee, is inviting the public to donate new or gently-worn winter wear for men, women, and children. The drop-off dates are from December 15th through January 12th. And the drop-off location is on the second floor of this building. You can leave it at the city manager's office. And we're looking for coats, caps, gloves, mittens, scarves, sweaters, warm weather gear. And there will be a winter coat giveaway on January 13th at the Senior Center between the hours of 9:00 and 12:00. And I also would like to echo Eileen and wish everyone a very, very happy and safe holiday. And thank you for all that you do throughout the year.
Basically, that's what I had planned on saying, because it comes from our hearts and we really care about, not that we disagree with everything people are saying, but you are a big help to us. One of the things that, when people get up there and talk, various people, and we try to reply back to them, but you take it home with you. You might wake up 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning and say, oh, you know what, they got a point. And we just appreciate you all year long, the ones that's here now, the ones that's on their way. You have a happy, happy holiday and please be safe. To you and your family.
Well, you got your Saturday in the back for the volunteers. All right, I guess too late, I should have been.
All right, I just want to make one correction. The giveaway is not going to be at the Senior Center, it's going to be in the Transportation Center. So it's going to be here in the Transportation Center on Saturday, January 13th, again, the hours are 9:00 to 12:00. Thank you.
One more announcement, I'm sorry.
This is never gonna end.
Thanks to our good mayor, I was trying to keep it short, but he's right, he's absolutely right. We, Asbury Park Recreation is having what you call a give-back. It's like a meet and greet this coming Saturday, December 16th, and so many people have helped the recreation department out this year and we really appreciate, and we try to give back as much as we can till then. And it's this Saturday, December 16th, free, you don't have to pay anything, from 7:00 to 12:00, and you're more than welcome. Thank you.
Where are we at, Jesse? Where is it located?
BFW on West Lake.
Okay, thank you.
From 7:00 to 12:00. Right?
Yeah, so I want to give a big...
Thank you, John.
Thank you to, speaking of volunteers, the master plan planning board volunteers. I know Yvonne and Barbara tirelessly, or just two of them, put a lot of effort into that and came up with a really, and Pam.
And Jim.
Oh, and Jim. Came up with a great master plan and the planning board passed it on Monday unanimously. So kudos to all of you for spending all the time that you did on working on the master plan. And then I want to also thank Connie Breach, who is a member of our local law enforcement, who threw a Asbury Park toy drive two weeks ago. She collects toys and has, I think she's in her 17th year, toys for over 400 families in Asbury Park. So, kudos to Connie. John?
That's it. Like everybody else said, happy holidays, merry Christmas, and a happy new year, well, we have a meal on the 27th, so I'll save the happy new year. This past Saturday, there was a great event at the Springwood Avenue Senior Center, the Kwanzaa event, and then it was followed with the Christmas tree lighting, the second annual across the street at the new Springwood Avenue Park, that was very, very good and well-attended. So thank you, Yvonne, thank you staff for making that happen. I'd like to throw some kudos out to Congressman Palone. We met with him this past week, there's been some problems going on with the TPS, the Temporary Protective Services, where the president administration has hit the Haitian community hard. So we wanted to talk to him about that, and we talked to him about some other issues. We thanked him for his negative vote on the 2017 Act where concealed carry weapons from other states can be now carried to New Jersey, and how three New Jersey congressmen could vote for that, to me is just unbelievable, but they voted for it. But again, kudos to Congressman Palone for reaching out to us and having a meeting, and he's going to set up future meetings to stay on top of this. He's always been very supportive of Asbury Park and is very appreciative. And that's it.
Matters by the city manager?
None at this time.
Matters by the city attorney?
Just one matter, and that is with regard to ordinance number 2017-47, which is on the agenda tonight for introduction. That's the ordinance that authorizes the removal of three on-street parking spaces located on Bangs Avenue and Bond Street in connection with the development of the property located at 700 Bangs Avenue. And this relates to a resolution that was approved by the planning board back in 2015, and a proposed development that will be taking place at that site that will involve the construction of a 56-car onsite parking facility in connection with that development. There is a need to remove three on-street metered parking spaces. Late this afternoon, the director of planning and redevelopment and the transportation planner reached out to me to request that there be two minor amendments worked into that ordinance before you introduce it. And I'd just like to ask Mr. Manzella to briefly address them with you, so that when you move it forward later on during the regular meeting, you can move it forward as amended with these two additional provisions.
So we took a look at the site plan for this property and we wanted to pose two additional sentences to be added to the ordinance. The first is, the property owner shall repair the street and restripe and renumber the affected parking spaces on Bangs Avenue and Bond Street at the direction of the city's transportation planner. The issue is when they remove those three parking spaces, the striping has to be slightly adjusted in order to avoid any conflicts with the driveway. So we're asking that they repair any of the roadway around where they're doing curb cuts and then restripe and renumber those spaces.
When you say they would restripe and renumber those spaces, you mean they'd pay DPW to restripe those spaces?
No, they would have their contractor paid.
Oh, okay, okay.
The second sentence is, as per the planning board resolution, the applicant is responsible for streetscape improvements in the right-of-way. Therefore, in order to mitigate potential safety hazards with the installation of curb cuts for the driveways, the applicant shall provide pedestrian-scale light fixtures in the public right-of-way as illustrated in the Central Business District Redevelopment Plan Streetscape Design Guidelines and shall be approved by the city transportation planner. We noticed that there was no lighting plan submitted for that planning board application. And our concern is it's a very dark intersection and with the installation of driveways and curb cuts, conflicts with pedestrians, cars may not see pedestrians walking in the neighborhood of the driveway. So we're recommending that the applicant provide pedestrian-scale light fixtures along the sidewalks.
Thank you. Any other matters?
Nope.
All right, at this time, we will break until the 7:00 PM regular meeting.
Yes.
Great. Meeting of December 13, 2017, of the council. Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Please rise for a silent prayer moment of reflection, please. Flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As to comply with the Open Publics Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 3rd, 2017, and posted on bulletin board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. This evening, we will have a proclamation being presented by Deputy Mayor Quinn. No, she does not.
So the city of Asbury Park is giving a proclamation to Haron Josephine. I think everybody in Asbury knows, Haron has certainly been a Facebook TV for years. Josephine has been behind the scenes, helping me for years with the social media in Asbury Park and our Facebook pages and everything else. So I'm going to read the, first of all, this was a really good order. This was a really good order. Okay. Whereas, Haron and Josephine have both made invaluable contributions to the city of Asbury Park, its residents and visitors. Haron's forward thinking led him to begin recording events at the St. Patrick's Day Parade, annual Easter Pageant Parade, and various other events around town, and at the Asbury Park High School, that has rarely been documented before. This progressive move led to capture many memorable moments to be shared with and revisited by future generations. AP-TV's growth far exceeds what one would normally expect of an all-volunteer body as a result of Haron's dynamic vision, inspiration, and leadership. Josephine has volunteered her time to building the city's social media outreach for the last four years. Her passion for the community and drive to keep us all informed and connected helped grow the city's Facebook pages from what started as a few hundred into thousands. This same passion has moved Josephine to continue to volunteer her time and lend her skills and talents to ensure that past, present, and future residents and visitors of Asbury Park remain connected. Now therefore be it resolved, the mayor and Asbury Park City Council thereby acknowledge and thank Haron Josephine for their passion, dedication, commitment to keeping the community and future generations connected and informed. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I valued my time with AP-TV and with the city, and I want to encourage anybody, anybody and everybody to get involved in the community, find something that interests you, it's a great way to meet people that have similar interests, and it's a great way to get familiar with the community. When I got started with AP-TV, we were new in town, I was actually new to the country, so it was great for me to learn more about things and actively get involved. So thank you.
So, it's very rare for me to be at a meeting, so it's kind of funny, because you guys usually see him. I'm usually the voice, I guess you could say, trying to keep everybody, all the fans connected. You know, and I guess in my head I probably had something more grand to say. But, you know, my husband really had no reason to volunteer for Asbury Park. Without getting silly or choked up, I fell in love with this place when I was 15. And I remember taking him down Asbury Avenue and I was just like, don't you just love it? You know, and, you know, there's something very special about this place that, you know, drives all of us to get involved and, you know, you know, like I said, he had no reason to. And I was the one with the love with it and it grew on him. And it definitely came at a time with our young family. And, you know, continue to grow it. You don't know where volunteering will take you. You don't know, you know, what friends, new family members that you're going to make. And, you know, just really remember why you came here. You know, if you're here at a council meeting, you've got the passion. If you're here, you know, we could have just enjoyed the beach like everybody else. But, you know, like I said, it really, volunteering actually opened up a lot of doors for us. And so, thank you, and you're part of my nervousness, but, you know, thank you, thank you for having such a big heart and loving a city that captured me at 15.
All right, thanks. Have a motion to open the meeting to the public, please?
Move it.
Second. Each member who wishes to come speak, please come up to the mic, state your name and address for the record. Each member of the public has three minutes to speak.
Hello. Hello, my name is Mervyn Ruffin, I've been down here before. I'm just down here about the project on the beach. I thank you for what you did for me the first time. But I go down there every morning, I talk to Jose or whatever about the job. He keeps, you know, telling me to come back, come back, every morning. I've been seeing people get hired that hasn't been down there, dedicated as I have been being down there looking for a job, me and the young man over there, Greg Reddard. We go there every morning. We've been down there every morning for the last two weeks. I've been on the app, I filled out my application, we both filled out our applications in October. It's two months now. They done hired, they saved 50 people, but they haven't hired 50 people. They hired a few people that just comes down there and just know people down there that they speak to and they allow men. I feel as though if somebody from the council or somebody that could go down there in the morning and check and see what's going on, because I do need a job, I have a family to feed, I've been living in Asbury since I was 46-years-old, and I'm just looking for a job and I'm asking for y'all help, is there any way y'all can help us, you know, do what we have to do to take care of our family and help this town? Because this is our town too, and we do want to help out with the growth in our town. That's all.
Thank you, and yes, we'll look into, Michael, can we find out who Jose is, as far as what his job title is and how far up he is in the structure? And I've talked to Mervyn before, and Steve at the Michaels Group has your application and he put it on top. And, you know, I've given you my card, said you used my card, and I think it has helped you get, you know, over there. I know I got your brother, helped get your brother's job down there. Anything we can do, we're going to do for both of you. So thank you for being persistent, that usually pays off.
And I kind of figured too, maybe if they seen somebody down there besides us, like, and hire, they help out. But I guess if we don't have no support, then they not going to do nothing. So I would ask for y'all's support and I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mike.
John Grant, Fourth Avenue. I have a question from the agenda packet on November 21st that listed, there was a payment to HUD for $27,525. And I'm wondering that relates to, what that relates to. On the Asbury Park Sun, they reported this week that the Westside Community Center received And it's interesting to me that those amounts are the same, and so I'm wondering why HUD was paid $27,525.
They're 100% related. The Westside Community Center in early '16 needed an emergency boiler repair. The West Side Community Center in early '16 needed an emergency boiler repair. It was the middle of the winter, and they didn't want their pipes to freeze. So, we authorized an emergency boiler repair under an emergency declaration from, in HUD guidelines. Subsequently, when HUD comes back and does their audit, they said it didn't meet the standards. So, we went back and forth a little bit, and HUD said you have to pay the money back. So, what happens is you pay the money back, but in the subsequent year, which will be next year for the fiscal year, we actually get the money back. So, we're paying them back, and then we get it back at the end. They just found that the boiler didn't declare as an emergency. That's all.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
Also, on, in the minutes on, or the agenda on August 9th, related to the city's audit, you had a corrective action plan. Six of the points were related to HUD compliance.
Yes.
And has that been addressed?
Yes. At the last meeting, I believe it was, operation, the daily operations of the CDBG program is gone to the county. We recommended that the county take it over. We were in negotiations. It was the last meeting or the meeting before the mayor and council authorized a shared service for the county to administer everything. So, that's how that's been addressed, is it's been repeat audit findings. That's no secret. It's been, I've mentioned it, it's been mentioned here, but now the county's managing it. So, those findings should go away.
All right, that's interesting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a motion to close?
Move it.
Second.
Leander Mohammed, Lake Avenue. What is the city's concern about the West Side Community Center?
I'm sorry, can you just state your name again?
Leander Mohammed.
Thank you.
That's your?
Yes, that's my question. What is the city's concern about the West Side Community Center? What is the interest?
We have no controlling interest of the board, the membership. We have nothing to do, say, or how it operates. Currently, they are in municipal court for alleged, and I say alleged because it hasn't been found guilty yet, violations. When we were in tax court in August, right now, they're appealing our tax assessor's decision that they are not tax exempt and therefore exempt from paying property taxes. They identified certain activities that they were doing. A gentleman declared that he was running his construction business out of there. So, there's no permits for that, there's no zoning approval for that, there's no marketing tile licenses for that, and I was actually in that court hearing. So, we went back, our inspectors went, issued summonses, notice of violations, sought access to the building. We went to court. The judge said he wanted the transcripts from the tax court. It's actually on for, I think, Tuesday, hearing about it. So, our interest is, we have no regulatory control other than the local ordinances, which myself and Kevin was actually at the meeting also, the tax court in August. They said they did things, we investigated, and right now, it's in court with hopefully a settlement on Tuesday.
Okay. Is that municipal or?
Yeah, it's here.
Okay. What time would that be?
They usually start at 10:00, maybe 9:00. I don't know how many trials they have that day, so I would get here early if you're going to come see, because the parking lot fills up quickly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion to adjourn. Close.
Move it.
Second. Right, we're going on to minutes. We have three sets of minutes this evening. We have executive session minutes on November 21st, 2017, workshop minutes on November 21st, 2017, and we have regular session minutes of November 21st, 2017. Have a motion to approve those minutes, please?
Move it.
Second. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We'll move on to the consent agenda. We have several items. Resolution 2017-364 is the resolution for authorizing special events. Resolution 2017-365, setting a reorganization meeting date for 2018, which will be January 3 at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. 2017-366, resolution approving award of contract for regional contribution agreement project for 1409 Summerfield Avenue. 2017-367, resolution to terminate server account billing for 610 First Avenue. 2017-368, resolution approving disposition of surplus property with no value. 2017-369, resolution approving Esberry One Liquor License LLC, 2017-2018 liquor license renewals. 2017-370, resolution rescinding liquor license 130333-013, Mommoth Lodge, Number 122, for 2017 and 18 liquor license renewal year. And this is just because they have to get approval through the director. 2017-371, public nursing services for January 1, 2018, and through December 31, 2018. Would anybody like any of those resolutions pulled from the consent agenda? Hearing none, have a motion to approve the consent?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
At this time, have a motion to add Resolution 2017-379, which is entering into Madison, an agreement with Madison Asbury for Fourth Avenue Pavilion Subsequent Developers Agreement?
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Sorry.
All opposed? Then we'll continue at the top of the individual resolutions at this point. We have Resolution 2017-372, resolution of the city of Esberry Park referring proposed redevelopment plan for 1001 First Avenue, city of Esberry Park, Monmouth County Block 401 Lot 10 and 11, 12, 13, dated December 7, 2017, in accordance with the local redevelopment and housing law NJSA 48:12A-7. Have a motion to approve, please?
Move it.
Second. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2017-373, resolution approving change order number one and two for Fourth Avenue improvements. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, one, hold on one second, please. Yes, this is the one. I was very happy to see back in, well, it starts back in August or whatever, when the contractor was going around putting purple dots on trees they were going to cut down. So, I moaned and groaned about it. These were beautiful, big shade trees. They were able to do this job and not cut those trees down, so that's deeply appreciated. So, six trees were saved on Fourth Avenue, and it's a great canopy. It just always confuses me how the deducts are exactly the same, and I talked to the city manager about this today, is same exact penny as the extras. So, I know that's normal, but it just always amuses me somehow they balance that budget. How do you balance cutting down six trees with something else? Whatever.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2017-374, resolution authorizing change order 17 and 18 with Blackrock Enterprises for the road program. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2017-375, approval of payment of bills. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
I was thinking the same thing.
Resolution 2017-376, resolution authorizing the transfer appropriations in fiscal year 2017 budget. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2017-377, authorizing execution of shared services agreement with the Township of Ocean Sewage Authority for technical rescue services for confined space entry. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2017-378, resolution authorizing the purchase of electricity. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Any comments or questions?
What's the estimated savings on this?
Eighty-five to $100,000.
Thank you.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2017-379, entering into agreement with Madison Asbury for Fourth Avenue Pavilion Subsequent Developers Agreement.
Move it.
Have a second?
Second.
Do we want to answer?
Any comments or questions?
Okay.
Okay. No.
Okay, Councilmember Chapman? We added the time on there, right, Michael?
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to ordinances, introductions. Ordinance 2017-45, an ordinance establishing a restricted parking space for use by handicapped persons at properties located at 12, I'm sorry, 1021 Third Avenue in the city of Esberry Park, and amending and supplementing section 7-36 entitled Handicap Parking of Chapter 7 Traffic of the Revised Ordnances of the City of Esberry Park, New Jersey. Have a motion to introduce, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for December 27, 2017. Ordinance 2017-46, an ordinance amending and supplementing section 28-1 administration by amending subsection 28-1.5 vital statistics of chapter 28 health regulations of the code of the city of Esberry Park, New Jersey. Have a motion to introduce this ordinance, please?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for December 27, 2017. Ordinance 2017-47, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Esberry Park authorizing the removal of three on-street parking spaces located on Bangs Avenue and Bond Street in connection with the development of the property located at 700 Bangs Avenue, Block 2508 Lot 2. This motion will also include the amendment that was made during workshop. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Public hearing is scheduled for December 27, 2017. We're on to public hearing, second reading. Ordinance 2017-41, ordinance of the city of Esberry Park supplementing traffic and parking regulations for chapter 7 establishing section 7-7.5 general provisions. Have a motion to open ordinance 2017-41 to the public, please?
Move it.
Second.